Blue thread.
All right, hello everyone. Tonight's planning board meeting is in accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20. Notice is hereby given that the planning board will meet on Tuesday, September 9th, 2025 at 7:00 PM in Town Hall, Meeting Room 124. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in person at One Liberty Lane Norfolk, Mass or by the remote Zoom connection provided. Please do note that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the remote connection. All right, thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and do some attendance. On my left, we have Melissa Mayo.
Hi.
Thank you. Dan?
Dan Seeger.
Mr. Searle?
And I am here as well.
And Chris Modford. All right, so we have a public hearing at One Pine for One Pine Street at 7:00 PM, but we have a request for continuance to 1014.
Yes, so the reason for the request is there's some survey information they need -- surveyor, of course -- to be able to work through some of the stormwater comments that have come up from the peer review process, so they have not received that information yet. So they're requesting continuance. They had hoped to have it. And so that's been the delay on their part. So they're requesting continuance. And then, from the last -- actually, we didn't really talk about it, but there was another -- in the peer review report, there was another special permit. They asked for it as a waiver, but it's on your next on the agenda for a special permit. And so you'll read that notice and then concurrently or simultaneously continue both of them to your October 14th meeting.
Okay. All right, so I'm looking for a motion to continue the One Pine Street site plan modification to our October 14th, 2025 meeting. That's a good time, 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM. So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion moves. All right, so let's go to our 701. I'm gonna look for a motion to waive the reading for the One Pine Street special permit to waive the landscape requirement. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. So this is another continuance based off of the previous one that you had mentioned, Rich. So I'm going to similarly look for a request to motion to continue this one to our October 14th, 2025 meeting. Do you want to give it 15 minutes?
No, it's just simultaneously.
Simultaneously?
At 7:00, so that way there it merges both of them.
Perfect, at 7:00 PM. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion moves. All right, so we're early for our 715.
Well, we have business to fill.
Perfect, let's do it.
All right. So it asks to move up the discussion regarding the affordable housing development bylaw for the November 12th, 2025 town meeting.
Okay.
In your share drive, you should see the edited version.
I also included a copy in your packet. It might be towards the back, though.
There's comments from Town Council, then I made some additional edits for discussion for tonight's review. So as you know, you voted the last meeting in August, submitted to the warrant to be included on the November 12th town meeting. We are going to be scheduling your hearing for October 14th. The Select Board has their meeting Monday evening on the 15th. They'll refer it back to you. And then you can have your hearing at the 15th meeting. In between, I'll forward to Town Council based on some of the discussion at the August meeting. And I wanted to go over what's being proposed, which hopefully can address the comments in terms of the way the existing bylaw is written. You use the median home sale prices for single-family homes over the previous 12-month period. And then you gotta subtract that from what under Chapter 40B, and Sue's here for that, what a home would be, that delta is the calculation for the payment in lieu. As of right now, I think we're talking over a half a million dollars, I think the difference. Eight hundred and eleven thousand is the median single-family home price in town. And at the three-something, somewhere around there is the number. So actually, I should probably scroll down to Betsy, too. Keep going down. There we are, right there, it's perfect. So the proposal is to, which is done by other communities as well, is to put a dollar amount in there. It's a fixed number, which allows people who are considering doing a payment in lieu, they know exactly what that number is. And then there's not -- then there would not be the necessity to do a calculation.
Yeah, so how long is that number gonna be good for?
That number will be good for a period of time. And when I say that, for instance, the one other payment in lieu that the board did, the previous board, was $300,000, which was in 2019. Was for Norway Farms.
So six years.
Six years.
Rough timeline.
Give or take, right? So the advice is one that it's not gonna be -- it needs to be revisited over time. But I think the more important advice, actually, based on discussions with Town Council, is that 400,000, that number came from the model MBTA bylaw that was put out by the state for if you wanted to do a payment in lieu, what amount. So considering, you know, 400 was a number, that's applicable to MBTA communities.
So it's consistent.
So it's consistent. However, we'll advise and Town Council want me to share with you that there are communities now that are being challenged as that even the fact of doing inclusionary is considered regulatory taking, because it's not contemplated in the statute in terms of subdivision control law. Tony, who we know Riley with our council, was on the side of a lawsuit for Stonem that lost from the developer. They sued the town of Stonem. It wasn't a payment in lieu, but just inclusion as a whole is a regulatory taking. The town didn't pursue it further, so it's just, it hasn't reached the pellet level in terms of the state level. But just advising the board that that's not an insignificant number. It's not, it is below a half a million based on what we're talking about, but you might want to think about a number that's a little bit lower. And the reason why I would think about a little bit numbers, because there are instances where I think payment in lieu is a better option for the development as a whole. So we don't, in some cases, we don't necessarily want to discourage the payment in lieu. And I think the one that you did before, which was Norway Farms, which was 14 lots, was a great example. If you go in Norway Farms, you know, the general objective when you do low-income housing is everything looks the same from the exterior, right? So it's not distinguishable. That was the big challenge in that particular development, as you may not know, those homes are over a million dollars now, so market rate. So how do you kind of blend that in so it doesn't stand out? So in that instance, the recommendation was to do the payment in lieu. In fact, they actually waited till we changed the bylaw to add the payment in lieu, because they really were hesitant to put it in the development. Because of the potential strain and stresses, you know, one to maintain a house equivalent to what's in the neighborhood. Plus, some of the social economic issues that may come along with putting some, you know, just one family in the neighborhood like that. So anyway, they went forward and did, it was a 300,000. So what I would suggest is that you might want to do a lower number. You don't need to make that decision tonight, because we can always go lower. But what I'm suggesting is that we go with this as the option, which is a fixed number for now versus the previous formula.
Yeah, I'm okay with the fixed option. I think it's better than not being transparent at all. Is it ideal? Not necessarily, because we're gonna have to revisit it, but it's better than not leaving it out there. As far as number goes, there's, obviously, we have the reason why it's four in here, the previous number being 300. So should we just look to meet in the middle somewhere? Is that?
We talked about that, yeah, internally.
Is that what makes the most sense?
I think it's a balancing act. Hi, Sue Jacobson, the Affordable Housing Director. So it's a balancing act. We don't want it to be so cost prohibitive that the developer doesn't do it, because as Rich said, it is not in the best interest, really, from our viewpoint, of putting up one family in a neighborhood with 14 $1 million homes. And they have to look the same from the outside. So keeping up a 3,000-square-foot home, heating it, it's not successful. So I think meeting in the middle is certainly what we should consider. You know, I'm not, Town Council indicated that, as Rich said, you know, they Stonem challenge, developers challenged Stonem and lost. So I think we, I think that's a good place to start, Chris.
Okay. Any questions on the board?
Just to make sure I understand, so that's the minimum, but then we can, we will determine on a case-by-case basis what the actual amount is?
I think if we go with this number, that's the number for one unit of payment in lieu.
Because the last paragraphs, or the last sentence there talks about make consult with the housing trust about the payment in lieu, whether or not a...
Right, so that's not the amount. Correct. That's about whether or not, you know, if somebody has, let's say, four in a subdivision of 20, then we would hope that this board would meet with the trust and kind of talk through, is four, do we want to even consider a payment in lieu for four? Or is that number a reasonable number in the size development that they're, that's what that's geared towards?
You do have, and if you look just a little bit below in that first sentence there, so if something's less than .5, you know, there's a case where you could get a fractional payment, too, so. Makes sense. So it gives you a little bit of leeway. And maybe, starting at 350, maybe that comes into play a little bit more as we go along. The one thing I want to, so for the newer members, if we go back a couple prior versions to this, you could even do like, it was like you could do almost like a two-family, which was in a previous version. Well, I know you were on the board then. And that became even trickier, because one interpretation, which I don't think was well-supported by the board, nor the neighborhood, was they were putting two attached together, and one was gonna face one street, one was gonna face the other. So we made a few changes to this, because we want, really want it to work for the affordable, and we want to work for the neighborhood, too, right? So I think this is another step to do that, so.
Yeah, okay. So that's 310-8.3 on that.
Yeah.
I don't have any further questions. I think we should revise it to 350. I think that makes the most sense. If anybody on the board disagrees, speak out. Okay. With that being said, we do have an appointment at 715. I'd like to entertain.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep. Okay. All right, so bringing up the appointment, thank you, Sue.
Sure, thank you.
For 715, 31 Pine Street, Pondville Medical. This is the site plan approval for two EV charging stations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
Read it.
Please.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law, Section 40A, and the Norfolk zoning bylaws, Section 310-6.7.5. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, at 715 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, relative to a site plan application for property located at 31 Pine Street in Norfolk, Mass. The applicant, Gary Lovoy of Innovis Energy, is proposing to install two electric vehicle charging stations at the Pondville Medical Center. The property is located in the C1 zoning district. Reference assessor's map 26, Block 81, Lot 9. The application and plans are available for public inspection on the Town and Norfolk website or in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during the hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Thursday.
All right, awesome. Rich, take us away.
So under the newly enacted EV charging bylaw provisions, you have an application for EV charging stations. We recall that the bylaw caught up with the EV world now that we have it on the books. I think it's pretty straightforward, it looks pretty good. The only, I did prepare a decision for the board tonight. The only thing in terms of decision was to have the, this translate onto the ASBIL plan, which would just be condition of it. So the location of it is clearly out of the way, so it doesn't interfere with other parking spaces. And the only other thing I think, so when I asked you about the vendor, is Altel, are they gonna be the vendor? Because I know, like, I see them on...
You wanna bring them up?
What's that?
You're asking them a question, do you want to bring them up?
Yeah, 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 come to them, yes.
No worries. Gotta keep Donna happy. She's our only guest out there in Zoomland.
How's everybody doing today?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, just introduce yourselves.
Nick Valori, East Coast Renewable Energy.
And I'm Gary Lovoy with Innovis Energy.
Awesome, thank you.
People do call me Lovoy sometimes, too. I like the fanciness.
So the question was the Altel systems, is that the question?
It's not so much the system, it's when I go, when it pops up on my, you know, Google Maps or so forth, is it gonna say, like, I see ChargePoint?
Yeah.
Are they similar to ChargePoint, or?
So ChargePoint, Altel, Tesla, just a charging machine, you know, they'll pop up. So the guts of the system, if you would, is run by a company called Ready. Ready posts on, I hate to use the word all, but the majority of the EV sites that you'll download on your phone when you're looking for a charge. So Cottage Street, Car Wash, along with the Medical Center, will be on the majority, if not all, of the charging websites.
So Ready Charge is the software? That's what you're asking, so Ready Charge?
So it'll pop up as Ready Charge?
Correct. Yep.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think it's real, just more curiosity, because we're gonna, we're gonna leave it blank, essentially, the end result with the decision, it's not really.
We've had a pretty good experience with Ready, to tell you the truth, in 30 or so that we've put in so far, so they're pretty robust, so.
The customer service with them is outstanding also, which I think, which is the reason why Innovis originally promoted it. When I was doing my background search on them, I felt that the availability of Altel through the Ready network communication, I think, is key with everything. As you guys know, you guys do communicating with people, and transparency is super important. And we felt that Ready software was among the best that's available this coming time.
Excellent. Did you wanna, did you want us to, what level chargers are these?
Three. So these chargers, the one we're installing, charge right around 200 to 225 miles per hour, whereas the, what I call the traditional Level 2s, which is what I have in my house, commercially, you'll see those out also pretty much everywhere. They charge between 10 to 20 miles an hour. You know, it's a substantial difference.
Yeah.
So specifically at the Car Wash, Car Wash, you sit there, let your car dry a little bit, you'll get a really nice charge over a couple, you know, 15, 20 minutes. At the Medical Center, across the street, we'll put in the chargers, again, go in, do what you need to do there, and you're out. So you're just not leaving cars substantial, you know, substantial time in any one location. So the stuff that we've been able to get approved through Eversource for these two locations in Norfolk is, you know, really unbelievable opportunity.
Talk to me a little bit about the Eversource approval process. Do they have to look at the drawings as well, or are they just interested in other things?
All of it has to get approved by Eversource before we actually can submit it to you guys, and it's all approved by then, but Gary, let him take control of that aspect.
Yeah, it's all a pre-approval. We go through the whole step-by-step process. What we do is we install the Eversource-approved transformer pad. We have the Eversource trench inspector come out. They tell us exactly where they want a bollard, the bollards, if necessary. It goes to the pole, which already got installed, which happened, so. Eversource installs their pole. It goes up the riser, and then Eversource will drop their transformer. And then we handle everything from transformer downstream to the stations. So they are involved with the whole process, they know all the material we get, they have the proper-sized transformer. Yeah, we've done a couple of these with them as well, so everything is kind of by the book, and it's kind of, I would say, cookie cutter. We've kind of made it cookie cutter to make sense for that particular transformer that they're gonna provide.
Makes sense.
That answers the question.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody have any concerns, questions, comments?
There was actually, earlier today, I had a, well, it was a potential concern, which was just, I wondered if, because that intersection, I don't know if you guys spend a lot of time in Norfolk, that intersection is not great, especially during games and, you know, football games and things. So I just wanted to make sure there was no line-of-sight issue, but then when I got there and I, the trees are actually in here, but when I drove by, you know, and saw it for myself, I was like, oh, they're actually behind the trees, the trees are already there, and that's not an issue right now, so I think that's fine. And that was, that was my only potential concern, but when I drove by, I no longer had that concern.
Yeah, and the one, specifically the Pine Street Medical one, it's in kind of that far corner, but it's all gonna be in the grass, too. So there's actually nothing we're doing with the actual asphalt or anything, which is kind of nice, so. And it's all as far away from the street as you can get. It's really gonna be kind of tucked in on the parking lot side.
Did you do the ones at the Adirondack Club in Franklin?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the same make-model? Okay.
Adirondack Club, how far is Stonem from here?
Forty minutes.
That's kind of far, okay. The Rent, we did one at the Rentham Town Hall, which is not in there. We did one at the parking, it's Five Dedham Street. There's, I believe, two stations in there.
Two stations there.
The same thing, so.
Okay, awesome.
So if you go, yeah, if you go to, you know where he's talking, right at the, you know where the Dunkin' Donuts is in, almost basically right across the street?
In that parking lot, right? Yeah.
We had put those in there, and then we're waiting on the Town Hall and the library, right?
Town Hall's done, it's just we're waiting on, actually, National Grid.
Okay.
But the library, we're waiting on them, they're redesigning the parking lot.
Got it.
That you need to know.
Okay, cool. So I don't have any additional questions. I don't see any glaring issues or any issues for that matter on this. Do you want to pull up the decision real quick? And so decision number 202508. That's it? That's all we've done?
Seems like more, right?
Right. It's crazy.
Feels, oh, yeah. It's not over yet, though.
Site plan dates, July 17th, 2025, map. All right. So Rich, you said there was something that you wanted to modify in the vote?
So I just modified under factual background, where it says the proposal is as follows. Under number two, I think that's when we had the type of charging station. So I just changed it to charging stations will be installed on the concrete utility pad.
And that's updated in the electronic version?
Yeah, I did have the ASBIL, hold on, let me just...
And you had the, under...
Where was the ASBIL?
Under general conditions.
Oh, general conditions, yeah, 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 all right, so that's it.
Okay, so we don't need to?
Nope, that's good.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. All right. Board just wants to give that a quick peruse. I don't see anything in here, well, okay, so that's...
Did you see something?
No, I thought I did.
I was gonna say, I put a hard copy in your packet as well.
Yeah, it just threw me off when I saw Pondville, and I know that we're talking about two different ones, and so I just wanted to make sure I was on the right one.
Yep, that'll be next.
No, Pondville's now. See, I did that, too.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
That's exactly what I did.
I'm confused.
There's a lot going on in Pondville these days for us, so.
It was funny, when I went to one to look at it, I look across the street, and it was like I've been there.
All right, so then, with no further ado, I'm looking for a motion to approve the 31 Pine Street Pondville Medical site plan approval for the two EV charging stations.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, all right, so that one moves. We got three minutes. I'm so sorry for the procedural stuff. How's everybody's day going, good?
Very good.
Not bad.
Do you want to approve the decision while you're waiting your three minutes?
I mean, I guess we can. You guys want to do that?
Sure.
All right, good? All right, it's good.
Thirty-five, I mean, 31, oh my god.
All right, so I'm looking.
Yeah. Jeez, it's still 37.
All right, we just lost a minute, perfect. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the decision for 31 Pine Street Pondville Medical site plan for two EV charging stations.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say it slow.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion's moved. All right, we've still got a minute and a half. Want to do some meeting minutes?
Sure. Anybody, before we go to approvals, have any questions or comments or concerns about the 8/12/25 and/or 8/21/25 meeting minutes? If not, take a motion to approve the 8/12/25 meeting minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the meeting minutes from August 12th, 2025, we say aye.
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 Oppose? Will take a motion to approve the August 21st, 2025 meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the August 21st, 2025 meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, with just seconds to spare, literally, just about 35 seconds, it won't be that.
So you guys are aware, we are ready to move forward. So when you guys give us the okay to move forward, we'll be there to start installing, and these things should be up and running now. Just because, once we install, we still have to wait for Eversource to, what they call, power it up.
Yeah. What's their timeline been, roughly? I feel like it was a couple weeks at the Adirondack Club.
Yeah, well, that was National Grid.
Oh, okay.
National Grid's been pretty good. The one I had, it's been better. We'll put it that way.
Yeah.
I would say within, I would give it four to six weeks from the time we call in the transformer, which is when the pad gets approved.
Yeah.
Which we do usually. I mean, the whole install will take us a week. It's not gonna take us a long time. So I would say four to six weeks-ish.
Awesome. All right, duly noted. All right, we have our 7:30 PM appointment for 36 Pine Street Cottage Car Wash Site Plan Approval for two EV charging stations. Would I actually motion to waive the reading? Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call, well, not a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's go ahead. 36 Pine Street Cottage Car Wash.
All right. So this one, uh, still interesting in terms of, as we corresponded via email. Going back into, at the end, it really doesn't matter per se, I would say. But I don't think they actually built the car wash as it was approved originally.
Skeletons everywhere.
Yeah. Because where the, the location for the one that's on the right-hand side, the lower right? I don't know, is there another area?
I think there's a better picture on a different, yeah.
Different sheet?
Keep going. I think one more. Two more, sorry.
It's okay.
Stand for it? I thought there was a better...
Hold on, no?
I apologize.
Yeah, I guess that, I mean, it's...
I can.
I think you're looking at the plan set.
The final plan set.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Different doc.
Oh, different document?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a really nice one in here. A PDF. Pine Street 36 Cottage Car Wash Final Plan Set in a PDF.
Oh, okay. That's the ASB type. Oh, okay.
So interesting, you're putting the charging ports just off of the vacuum stations. So as you're vacuuming, you can charge your car.
That's what they were thinking, because, you know, if you're charging, you're going there for charging. While you're doing that, hey, I want to clean my car. So you get out the vacuum. Vice versa, if you're going, you want a vacuum, maybe get a little charge while they're doing it. So that's the way Michael was thinking.
That's some big brain thinking there. I like it.
Yeah, so it's kind of like I was saying, kind of outside the box. The next page is a little better, actually, I think.
Oops, sorry.
Yep. So down there is kind of the way it is now. So again, we're kind of setting it off. That one there, I did, um, I don't want to say I'm gonna amend something, because I don't want to get in trouble. But I'm putting two bollards behind that as well, because that's where you're gonna come in. So for this station right here, we're gonna have two bollards in front and two bollards in back, just because that's where, you know, people come in, so, to protect the station itself.
Yeah, I'm gonna... Always find these things fascinating sometimes, right? As we dig in. So this section here should have been continuous.
Yeah.
The curb should have come...
On the original one?
On the original one.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they didn't do that. And I didn't, interesting enough, I didn't see any changes to do that. Having said that, it is there today. So the other thing I did ask Gary, which I was kind of curious about having him here, so they're out of the way from the vacuuming? That's what I would have wanted if I was a consumer, but hey, every consumer's a little bit different, but he chose to put them here. So hopefully it works for him. But, because this is wide, this is twenty-four feet. So it doesn't need to be twenty-four feet for a single-lane drive aisle, but, but he's choosing that, so that, you know, it's his, but...
The intent is really to use them while you're vacuuming your car?
Well, think about it, you've got ten, fifteen minutes.
Nah, you don't vacuum.
Like, two miles charge while you're vacuuming your car?
Yeah, it just seems a little strange. You plug in for a pretty short time.
I think, though, you'd probably end up, or at least I would. So I usually go there, car wash, vacuum, leave, and go home and do everything else. Maybe I would just do it there while I was charging, I don't know. Because they have everything you need, you know, all the white, you have to buy it all while you're there. But maybe people would stay longer if they needed a charge or they needed to go somewhere, or they're looking to, you know...
Can people go in and just charge without getting covered?
Yeah.
It's open to the general public any time of the day?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I agree. It's an interesting design choice, but we're not necessarily here to support or...
Yeah, sure.
argue about the economics of it. It's on the owner. I think it's nice that they're doing it. If it works out, great. If it doesn't, okay.
The owner and those salespeople.
Yeah.
If the, if it's all full, Chris, you can just be like, hey, I need to vacuum my car. Can you go across the street to the other one over there?
Right. Exactly. Yeah, at the end of the day, that's the only thing that, you know, I would see as a true issue, is if somebody really wanted to vacuum and they couldn't because there was that many EVs.
Hopefully that happens, but we'll see.
Yeah.
Like, generally, I mean, we do, we do have a, you know, a couple of the stations we have, the sites, they get, like, we had one, you mentioned the Stoughton site. It's crazy. It's at a hotel in Stoughton, and it gets a lot of use.
But what's the density in there?
A lot of use.
In that area, right? Like, of other EV chargers? You find yourself in a nice little EV desert, and you're golden for a while.
There's one in Quincy, another dual port. It's at a medical center that's not open. It's a closed medical center, so it's in a parking lot. And that thing gets a ton of use.
And that's the same, that's trucks, isn't it?
Yes, the same gentleman from Pine Street Medical Center.
You know where else that would get a lot of use is Forkix. Parents are there all the time.
That is like, I know.
I've actually reached out to them, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, I think, it's interesting. I mean, here, I think there is, let's see, right? There's gonna be some apartments in the walking-distance proximity to that, so... I don't know.
The one thing you can understand, Rich, is these are quick chargers. So it's like, you're gonna go there for ten, let's be, let's call a spade a spade. You're gonna go there for thirty minutes. So you're really not gonna leave your car there and walk back to your place. Like, you're gonna sit there, wash your car, clean your car, you know...
Watch Netflix.
Exactly.
So instead of overnight emails... You're going there, Uber drivers.
Yep.
They run these guys a lot. They wait for their next fare and stuff. So that's what you see.
If these were the Level Two chargers, yeah, people would walk from the condos or apartments, leave their car there, charge overnight, and then go. These are really...
Go the fast, right?
These are really...
Yep, I think it's...
Yeah.
It's good in my mind. Anybody from the board have any questions?
Nope.
Or in the site plan?
No questions, but I do think, so the one on the right, that is, you know, we're looking, I don't know if anybody on, nobody's online. Oh, yeah. Betsy and Donna.
Donna's actually here.
She's here, okay. So the one, the right, in this view that we're looking at here, there is actually space, too. I usually go up and out that way, so I don't think, I mean, if somebody really needed to charge, you could just ask them if they could scoot up a little so you can vacuum your car, too.
Yeah, they're pretty tight, too. You'll be able to go through the same spot you are. It's not much wider than the little island they have now for the vacuuming.
Right.
Again, I'm not too concerned about it.
No.
Especially with more of these in the area.
Yeah, I hope it draws people in and gives them more business.
Hundred percent. I just wish they had the fans on late at night. I know it's a noise issue, but still, like, I washed my car there once, and the fans didn't turn on. I was like, are you kidding me? And then I remembered, it was after one, ten, or eleven, or something like that.
So is it a noise thing?
Yeah. Yeah. So I went home. I had a spotted car that day. Anyway, I'm looking for a motion to approve, well, do we want to look at the decision first? Well, we can look at it after Rich is talking, so. Looking for a motion to approve 36 Pine Street Cottage Car Wash Site Plan Approval for the two EV charging stations.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that moves forward. Thank you. All right. The decision. Similar boilerplate language? Do we want to put that up real quick?
Exactly the same.
Just take a quick review. Thirty-six. All right, look at that, 2025-09. We're making progress. All right, and you made the same changes, Betsy?
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, I, the same changes.
Okay. All right, so looking for a motion to approve the decision for 36 Pine Street Cottage Car Wash Site Plan Approval for two EV charging stations.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion moves. Gentlemen, thank you. I look forward to seeing it.
Thank you, guys.
So thank you for having us. Any other questions, obviously, you can reach out to me. You guys, mostly you have my contact, you have Gary's contact. So if anything pops up, please reach out to us, okay?
I just want to reiterate, appreciate your patience as we went through all those bylaw changes to support these types of initiatives. Thank you.
Welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Nice to meet you, Chris.
Thank you so much for your help.
You're welcome.
All right, Rich, so we did 310-8.3. Do you want to continue on with the 6.5 or 6.4, or do you want to go to other business?
Well, I do want to finish up 8.3, right?
Oh, you didn't feel done, done?
Well, no, you didn't vote.
I felt done.
Didn't go over everything.
Well, you didn't vote, because I want to...
You want to vote so that we can just be done with the language.
Well, that way, when we publish it, it'll be the...
The final.
Yeah, final.
Fine. Always looking for commitment. Jeez.
I don't know. I get it.
All right, so, um, starting at the top in A, the main change is Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities, HLC. That's where we're introducing that new term. In B, we talked a little bit about how the bylaw is not applying to any development for which a complete application for special permits, subdivision of land, or plan. Lots of language here. No land should be subdivided or divided by. Has been submitted to the town clerk. An adoption of this bylaw. No project may be divided or phased to avoid the requirement of this section. So essentially, shoring up the fact that you have to do this.
Yeah, and you can't segment things.
Right. So... And then we've got the E-code update in there as well, right?
E-code update.
MLGC-41 or whatever, inside the chapter section. And then in the table, we're removing the total number of units. We're making it six plus and a flat ten percent overall.
Correct. Yep.
All right, that's page one. Any questions or concerns?
Just one point of clarification, really. I think in other documents, we've called the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EOHLC, so I'm not... I just want to be consistent. I don't, I can't remember if we actually, if that made it into any actual bylaw changes that we made previously, but we definitely talked about it that way.
Yes, when we had our presentations from Josh and team, they were calling it the EO.
That's how the state refers to it. Their acronyms all have the EO on it.
Yeah, so, uh...
Oh, you want to go EO, EOHLC?
Just to be consistent.
Sure.
Just have to add an E and an L.
We got E and L, yep.
Find and replace. Super easy.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, next page. So changes around the minimum of $400,000 per required affordable housing unit. So the discussion prior to this was around changing that from $400,000 to $350,000. It seemed like we were all on board with that. It seemed like we were all on board with that. I think we still are.
Changing the $400,000 to...
350.
350, yeah.
Alright, so we'll make that change as well, 350?
Thank you.
Per required affordable housing unit. And then the final line is, the planning board will consult with the Norfolk Affordable Housing Trust. And then Section 3, we're removing only... Yes.
Should that be a shall instead of a may? I mean, don't we want to make sure that that decision is done in consultation with the trust?
I think it allows us the opportunity to choose if we want to, and it doesn't force it.
Yes, so Tony...
No, but that's, that's my question. Are we good with that, or should we require the consultation?
I don't know that I'd want to require it personally.
Yeah. Well, I think the, I think you put it in the side notes there. You don't really, it kind of, in some ways, goes along with his comment on the other, the lower section about, you know, you almost, I would say, delegating it to somebody else. So, may, you can consult. It's a little softer.
Yeah. Then there's the, the off chance that we don't do it one time, and then we're in conflict around bylaws.
Yeah, no, totally. I'm just thinking like, at some point in the future, when none of us are on the planning board, do we want to make sure there is coordination when you have a situation in the town where they're not?
I think the Norfolk Affordable Housing Trusts will make sure.
It will be important to put in the notes, or maybe even the town meeting. I think in town meeting, we probably should say this anyway, right? This part, that this needs to be revisited too. This is not a... This will have a, this will age out over time.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it'd probably be overcomplicated, but could you like, like index that to something so that it adjusts over time without having to go through a bylaw update?
I tried that last time.
Yeah, it's pretty, uh...
Yeah, that's fine.
I spent, what, 20 minutes trying to argue that point.
Some price index or something, where, so it escalates automatically?
I was like, can we point them to a website where we have the new price updated, and we can do like surge pricing or something?
So we...
I mean, the market changes so much.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Be back in the next, you know, two town meetings for now, changing it, but maybe that's just the reality of it.
I would have rather just divided out. What do we got? We want a $50,000 in five years or six years? It's, to me, that would have been fine, if you really, if your intent on escalating it every year.
Yeah, I think if you do the math the way I figured it, it's, it's like, what, um, what's 100,000 divided by 6% wise?
That was to get to the 400, though, but you're going to get to 350.
Yeah, so, alright, so let's see.
But at the same time, we might want to reverse it and go the opposite direction as well, so...
Yeah, and it may just be one of those things where you want to revisit this at some point, then it's a couple of years to make sure that, you know, dedicated number system works anyway.
Yeah.
It sort of forces a refresh at some point in time.
I wish we could put an ex, like, an expiration clause on this, like, number valid until...
Forces it to be updated. Yeah, um...
Rich is like, god damn it.
Can't we just vote?
Could you put something in there that says, like, the planning board shall review biannually, or something like that? That doesn't necessarily require you to change it, but just as language to say, like, hey, every other year, you're going to take a look at this, make sure it still works.
Within the bylaw itself?
No, we wouldn't do that. I think it just, it sounds like good record keeping.
I hear you. Well, let me, let's go with this, if you don't mind, and then we can kind of think about it, because... Yeah, let me, I'm leaning no, because I feel like you got, like... Generally speaking, with the bylaws, we should be kind of actively looking through them sometimes. They just kind of, like, there's a whole bunch of, you know... This one might, depends where this goes, actually, in terms of, you know, across the state. If it ends up, if it gets up to a higher, if it, if somebody pushes it in terms of litigation-wise, and it goes up, I mean, it might be, we might have to strip this out completely if they feel it's... If there's a sense from the courts, it's a regulatory taking.
Yeah. How strongly do you feel?
No, I was gonna say, I don't want to let the mechanics get in the way of the intent here. So, I'm fine.
Okay. Alright, if we're cool, then move on then. We're going down to the bottom of Section 3. Removing only and changing the language to rental and/or ownership, removing homeownership, and then removing at the end of the line, and shall not apply to rental development. This contribution can, alternatively, shall apply to rental and/or ownership developments and division of land.
There's one above that, just so you saw. I just added in about the trust. So I deleted it, deleted votes, and two, and just says, put S on the accepts the contributions. So if you vote it, and it goes that way, they automatically accept it. So Sue was fine with that. We talked about that earlier.
Okay, that wasn't in, uh...
That ties into Tony's comments. Have you seen...
It just isn't in the draft, Rich.
It's not?
No.
The printed draft I gave you?
Yeah.
Oh, it's not the printed draft.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's alright. Alright, so looking online now. Votes, two accepts. Okay, alright, moving to digital. Thank God for technology.
The digital person went to the paper. That's kind of a...
Right, I know.
Let's keep it on, Tony, I like that.
Yeah, gotta change it up every time.
I know, man.
You might have a twin brother you don't know about, you know?
Oh.
I'm joking. Uh, alright, so then, no changes, other than...
We're going to have the EO.
EO for HLC. Then that brings us down to Section F.
And that's, again, a comment that... Town Council recommended.
You want the word "A" by the SPGA as a condition of the special permit review?
Yeah.
An approval process of the onsite development, the SPGA shall consider the onsite affordable units through a separate special permit application.
Why a, why a second or a separate special permit application, just out of curiosity? Instead of just keeping it all together in the same request?
So... Let me see why we would want to do it.
Doesn't it like initiate a whole host of other things that have to happen as well? And then it's tied specifically to that property, as opposed to being part of the original?
It's definitely a little more complicated offsite than onsite.
While you're thinking about that, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think it's so you aren't looking at two different sites in the same permit application.
So basically, it would get, so the offsite would be approved, and then we would move on to the actual offsite plans.
Yeah, it looks like the concept would be approved, and then the, the special permit for the actual building of the...
That makes sense.
And then after that, you've got a couple of changes for HLC that need to be updated. Other than that, I'm good with the language as proposed, based on our edits. Any questions or concerns, comments?
I just have to confirm the process, Rich. So these, we'll do a public meeting on this at our next meeting, and then they'll go to the select board for...
So they're gonna, the select board is referring back the one that you submitted prior to the warrant closing. And we're, I'll, I'll call it a swap out. So what you're going to hold the hearing on is this version.
And then after that?
After that...
Hearing, it's, it's in.
Then you'll vote to make your recommendation, then it'll go on to the, and maybe there's another change.
Yeah.
So whatever you finally vote on, October means we'll send it to the select board to place it on the warrant.
Got it, thank you.
And then go from there.
Alright, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the updates to the 310, Section 310-8.3 Affordable Housing Development bylaw as updated.
So move.
You have a second?
Sorry, as updated, meaning we're changing the $400,000 to $350,000, and then all references to HLC will be EO HLC.
Correct.
Are there any other ones that I'm forgetting?
Did you say that?
We added the word "A".
A, yeah.
Article.
In front of condition and provision F. So looking for the second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Alright, that one moves. So, um, we'll see this...
October 14th.
October 14th. Alright, you want to do the other two?
Yeah.
Up next, 310-6.4 Nonconforming Structures.
Definitely a little more reservation on this one from the town council. Let's just open that up.
What's the basis?
The reservation?
Yes.
Potential conflict with the statute. Of, uh, let's open that one up, see what his notes say. So the first one, lock coverage and height can't be struck because it's protected under Chapter 48, Section 6. There's, um... What I would... At the interest of, actually, where we're at right now in terms of the process, the ZBA meets next week, so they haven't had a chance to digest these comments. I think it may make sense to go through that and not do this in November, because...
So push this to spring?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Because there's a little, it just...
I don't want to toy with anything that's gonna just get pushed back from the AG anyway.
Yeah, so, I think it's worth just punt on it, or, not punt, but could talk about it next week at the ZBA, and talk, talk it through. With the points the town council made, because they haven't seen these points yet.
Yep. Any reason why we would do the opposite, why we'd want to push to get this onto the warrant?
I'm not really seeing a reason internally. I will say, the fact that we made the change in the demolition reconstruction in '23 was a positive thing, in terms of that limitation. Because it has, I think, the intent it has done with it, I think, was some people would want to see. Because we have a, there was an application filed on Mirror Lake, and they were demolishing a house, wanted to put up a new house, which was significantly larger than the cottage house that was there. And it seems the way I've been communicating that their architect did not review the bylaw and missed it, that change. So I think they're gonna have to kind of regroup in terms of what they want, but the neighbors had come out to the hearing and like...
Excuse me?
The cottage is 1,100 square feet, now they're proposing a 2,500 square foot house. So that has done its effect, I think, but the other is, I think, there's nothing pressing per se.
Okay.
Because the board, if you read through it, the ZBA themselves, they could impose some of these conditions now, if they want to. I think they're trying to, trying to understand, trying to simplify it in terms of, but...
Alright, so if nobody has any issues, then we'll look for a vote to postpone 310-6.5 to the spring warrant.
6.4.
6.4, sorry.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Now 6.5, where are we at on that one? Where is that one?
That's a great question.
It is. Right, there.
Close, yes.
Same one, right?
Yeah.
No quite, no...
Oh, it's the trailer homes, mobile homes, recognition.
There's no issue with that.
Nope.
Town Council didn't have any issues with this?
No.
Okay.
I'm glad they're updating that one. That one has never made any sense to me, not being able to have it temporarily, you know? It's so hard to find short-term housing, and expensive.
Why did we change it from 12 to 6?
Just to, uh, because it coincides with the building permit, and I think they're good for six months.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm glad we're changing this too.
Yeah.
Because we had some, unfortunately, some situat, you know...
Two.
Two, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, any questions or concerns with the language change? Alright, hearing none. I'm going to look for a vote to put the changes to the bylaw for 310-6.5, Section D, onto the warrant. Bringing us to a hearing next October.
So moved.
So move, or second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, opposed? Alright.
Thank you.
That is done for this fall special town meeting.
And then we go to the top of the agenda.
Alright, 117 Main Street Norfolk Fire Station, update on the completion and vote to recommend extension of temporary occupancy. How about we talk about the storm drain function?
That's why we're talking.
Yeah, so what gives?
Uh, there's clearly, uh...
Deficiencies.
Deficiency in terms of...
Functionality.
Functionality, but I think it's really a design issue. So the engineers of record need to come up with a solution to the problem, therefore needs to be continued.
The permit?
Yeah, the temporary, correct.
Yeah, so, um, Beta reviewed the design though for the storm drain, right?
Yeah, the one thing, and we can go back, which is kind of the cautionary tale. They didn't do, they did it based on soils. They didn't do, um, test holes. They did, they did the stormwater system based on, pull up the, uh... Old decision. What failed in the process, right? That's the question, why do we hear?
We, uh, we have our own third party that we use to review these plans. We just went through an awesome RFP process.
Yep.
Yeah, here we are. And how many kayaks do you think we could fill in that?
I don't know. Depends. Wait a few more months, you'll definitely fit quite a few more in there. The waiver was requested and was granted, unfortunately, in this particular instance.
Is it not draining? Is that...
Yeah, it's not draining.
And it smells.
Oh, no.
It smells too?
Yeah.
Okay, that's...
Because you have all that vegetation, and if it's submerged, it's just doing the normal thing.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's not, it was designed as a detention basin, so it would dry up, and it hasn't... I don't think completely dried up, that I've seen, maybe.
We should just put all the retention basins, like, going right back to Mirror Lake, and solve the problem, or Kingsbury.
It's vegetation, oh, yeah, Kingsbury, pardon. It's a whole other issue.
Yeah, so... Section 4.1942 Stormwater Basin Design of your regulation, the applicant seeks a waiver to not design the stormwater basins based on incident to bore hole permeability. They, this waiver is granted to allow stormwater infiltration design based on soil texture class.
Won't be doing that again, huh?
I was just gonna say that.
Yeah, sometimes it works just fine.
Other times?
Would we normally grant on a private project, we wouldn't normally grant that waiver? Because this was a town project?
It's a cost-cutting, or saving measure, partially. I see.
What I would want to go, I'll just, my memory is not perfect. When this came up a while ago, they didn't want to disturb the site because of the existing fire station, this location, at the time. To do the, to do the test holes, to dig it up, so you know what, what's going on there. In turn, and that obviously was not a... Now we're, not a good decision.
Okay.
So now they're gonna need to come up with a...
Solution.
Are they gonna have to do that? Are they gonna have to do that now? Are they gonna have to actually dig?
No, I think we know our answer, as to the results of that test. It's not going to go anywhere. So now we have to figure out a way.
Well, we know the results now, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, yeah, but still, I mean...
So now they're gonna have to go back and rerun all the calculations based on that stormwater design, and...
Find a way to get that water out?
Find a way to, yeah, I mean... You know, it's... It really, yeah, it, it could function as a wet basin, because it seems like it's in the water tank.
It's wet?
It's wet. That's not the way it was designed. Now, there's a whole nother discussion, so, but they've got to come back with a solution. Yes, we do get peer review projects, but applicants propose projects and request waivers, and so they have to have...
Hundred percent.
You know, they have to bear the responsibility of that.
It's a good lesson learned.
Yeah.
Maybe we put some trout in it, and that could be the next fishing hole.
I wasn't aware, it, yeah, it makes sense, it smells, but, yeah.
Is it the rain garden that's in the front? Is that what that is?
Right behind the sign, yeah.
It's not supposed to be.
It's not supposed to be a rain garden?
No, that's the problem. It's not supposed to be a rain...
Because the existing swell that was adjacent to the church parking lot, that's still operational and working.
Yeah, and even the other ones on the other side, to the left on the other side of the parking lot. I mean, the one thing is, and I don't know how the answer to it, but the roof drains are draining into that basin too, if you look at the, so...
You could get those rain barrels, and then use that to water everything.
Get some rain barrels.
I hear we got some extra.
This is going to eat into the savings.
Probably.
We're pretty proud of that, too.
Yeah. Well, hopefully we can min, well, not us, but hopefully they minimize the amount that it eats in, but I'm grateful to have that as contingency.
Yeah, so in the meantime, it kind of makes sense...
What day is their occupancy over?
I think it's technically expired.
Okay.
On site, so they need to catch it back up. I think they want it to the end of, I'm told, but I don't know. I think it may make sense to... Go to the end of the year at the moment.
I was gonna do February, give them six months.
Yeah, you can do February.
Because, I mean, unless they're doing something fast, we've got frozen dirt in front of us.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it makes sense to...
I mean, February is not going to help them from a construction perspective either.
No, 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 right. At least to come back, at least pose a solution.
Anybody opposed with the February timeline?
Nope.
No.
Alright, is, uh, is it a leap year next year?
An extra day.
Right? Well, just in case for the voting.
Even year? It's a leap year.
So conceivably, when would be our meeting on February?
Meeting would be February 10th.
Alright, so let's have it expire the 15th.
We want to go, that's a weekend.
Uh, so the 17th.
17th would be great.
So motion to approve the temporary occupancy, temporary occupancy permit for 117 Main Street, the Norfolk Fire Station, until February 17th, 2026.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, let's move it. Thank you. Medway Branch Shared Use Path. We're actually getting some, uh, motion on this, huh?
We are. So, just back before you, just kind of, uh...
Sure. Which, would you like the PowerPoint?
Yeah, the PowerPoint, I think is, is probably good.
Ask Tom why this is running so slow.
So this is, uh, the first slide is-- Just gives a kind of a regional view of where the Medway Branch, the former Medway Branch rail line could ultimately go over time. Medway Branch is, the road was the former Medway Branch rail bed. If you go to the second slide-- What ultimately trying to do is create a shared use path that whole length of that corridor, the Medway Branch. What we're proposing is Phase 1, which is in the red, which goes from Barnstable down to Tucker Road, so right now there's no sidewalk there at all. Because it's a former rail bed, the right-of-way is, it's much larger than a typical right-of-way would be. Because we're, we completed the Complete Streets Priorization Plan a few years ago, it makes us eligible to apply to Mass DOT for construction money, to build the shared use path, or any, anything that's in our Complete Streets, we can apply for funding to, to do that, could be a variety of different things, but one of the things that we're looking at is this section of Medway Branch, which would go from Barnstable down to Tucker Road, which would go right past the Senior Center. What's being proposed would be eight to 10-foot wide shared use path on the Senior Center side of the road, so there would need to be some walls, some work to be done, but we would, we were, what I'm proposing, which I, I think it was back here in January, I mean, I think, I'm trying to remember, it was a while ago, suggested the planning board that the off-site mitigation way that you have could be a tool, a tool that you have design money, apply to Mass DOT, and if we're accepted, then we would actually design it, so this would be an application for construction money. If we're accepted in terms of the award, the construction money, which is up to, it's a half million dollar request, in terms of dollar amount, then that would be designed and then constructed by next June 30th. So I'm asking the planning board to, to fund that, that piece of it, which there's a, a proposal in your-- shared drive from Beta Group to do the engineering design and permitting. Just in terms of, like, the bigger picture, Blair has discussed, and is open to the idea of actually having a shared use path go through the landfill and go back to the rest of the trail that's part of Medway Branch, that eventually could have a spur over to Rivers Edge Community, so that it could be connected into the center of town. The purple phase would be continuing down to the center of town, and then we get down to the commuter rail station, which would follow the old MTA rail line. So we're doing it in multiple phases, because for one, it's, it's more, a little bit more complicated, you know, two, three, I'll call it Phase 4, so to speak, this is a little bit straightforward. We wanted to go further, but based on the money available to fully fund the project, we kept it between Barnstable and Tucker Road.
So on Medway, will we have, will it just, will there actually be sidewalks, or are we thinking it would be more like, you know, the lines on the road where it shows this is a walking and a bike path, like you see in some towns where they're actually making a dedicated zone for non-cars, essentially?
So it will be separated, so it'll be the edge of the road, the berm, and then most likely a grass strip, if you will, and then the eight to 10-foot, so it's gonna be separated. Ideally, which is more of a larger discussion, like, we're gonna, I like granite, you know, from a design standpoint, we don't have granite, we have the, the berm, which is, like, I get it, but I think the vertical granite's a much better deflection barrier between that and the, the path, but-- We'll have to get into the design, maybe we can have something that kind of provides a better--
Yeah, that's--
--safety, because it's--
That's a good point, because the berm is better for, in New England, because of the snow and the, you know, replacement of granite, and, you know, so then you would have the berm where you can kind of go up and over, but for safety, the granite's definitely--
What about just concrete?
Well, it could, it could be concrete, yeah. So we'll, that, we'll have to explore it as part of the design, because I feel like it--
Needs a barrier.
It, it needs some protection along there.
Yeah, I'm not opposed, I just, I know that-- The granite, without, like, love and care and attention on a regular basis, it does not always stay as nice as it should.
So usually, and so in New England, what typically happens is plows hit it because they can't see it, you know, in the, in the snow, so--
Yeah.
But yeah, to your point, then they have to fix it in the spring, just like the cobblestones.
No, I, absolutely, I mean, I'm--
Just looking out for my, my pals over at the DPW.
Yeah.
No, I totally, and that's why they, they don't prefer that, I totally get it, and--
But not a problem for us today. For today, we are discussing the use of the sidewalk mitigation funds in what value?
Is the value the beta?
Sixty-two thousand.
Okay.
So sixty-two K?
Sixty-two K.
How much do we have total on the funds?
One forty?
I'm gonna look right now.
Thank you.
I'll just play some music.
Some hold music?
Some hold music.
Then while we're at it, what's the length of this stretch?
Hmm, I think it's in the--
Is it in the beta?
It might be in the cover.
So six, the lump sum, sixty-two thousand.
The length of it? Is it in the right in the B? I feel like it's in the front, apparently, no? We didn't put the length in there? I could have, may have the length of it into the agreement, so it's there.
Yeah, and who's doing the work? Beta?
They're doing the engineering--
Engineering?
Yeah, and then it'll be, and then it'll have to be put out to bid.
Okay.
Like a quarter of a mile.
Like a quarter of a mile, roughly?
Yeah.
And then, so this is going right in front, essentially, of the Senior Center?
Yeah, off-site should be in our budget.
Budget.
Do we have concerns with the abutters?
Yeah, that was gonna be my point, especially considering many of them were not very happy with the decision we recently made on the Senior Center.
We do have concerns, and those are, those are legitimate, valid concerns. The one-- Thing is that this can be, we submit the application, which is really just a little bit of time, staff time, it's not a budgetary time, so if we weren't awarded the-- We also could-- Fair point. I've, I've raised the issue about--
Just curious, I mean--
Yeah, uh, we're intent, is everything is within the right-of-way? So they're not, there's only really one abutter, per se, who directly abuts the right-of-way.
Right, that, one on the corner.
One on the corner.
Right.
Yeah. And that, that's valid.
I mean, has there been any engagement with any of them on this?
There hasn't, yet. There hasn't yet.
No, that would be after design, when we were looking at the approval.
No, I get, I get that from a process standpoint, but I'm a little concerned about spending sixty-two thousand to start designing something that's gonna be--
So what we, what we can do is--
So this includes all the surveys and everything?
Yeah, if-- Those are very, uh, we could--
I'll just, shoot, like, from when I was in government, we were giving grants for these type of things, nothing gets, I've never seen things get as hotly opposed as bike paths.
Really?
For reasons you would never understand, but like, people get adamantly opposed to them.
So why don't we--
Thankfully, it's not a whole bike path, it's only a portion of the fund.
Yeah, a couple of blocks.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, to be honest, I would hope that this would be welcomed in that particular street as well, because, especially on days of going to the transfer station, that is a well-traveled road, and this provides some well-needed safety.
I would too, I just think that starting that conversation now, instead of, hey, we spent sixty-two thousand dollars designing this, would, here's what we want to move forward with.
Yeah, so we weren't actually gonna, we weren't gonna spend the design money until we actually knew we got the award money.
Yeah.
So we weren't gonna design it.
So this is just--
We're actually going, it's a little bit reversed, we would apply for the construction money, and we would have the design money to go if we got the award, so we weren't gonna spend the money on the design, so--
So I think during the master plan process, one of the things, I mean, we heard a few things over and over and over, and one of them was sidewalks, so when we were talking about, you know, what we could do for alternatives, Josh from MAPC said, what if you did multimodal paths? Because it's just not possible on some of these roads, unless we're gonna take over some of the front lawns and then build, you know, retaining walls. He said, what about, you know, for, because you guys have a lot of narrow roads, what if we just put paths throughout the town? And it seemed to be welcomed from, you know, it was, I thought it was very creative, I really liked the idea, because we can't, there are just some roads that we'll just never have sidewalks, and this is a creative way. It's also, makes it faster to get from point A to point B.
No, I, I mean, from a, I, I 100% agree, it's a fantastic idea.
The abutters, because we just had the same challenges.
We just, we just approved something in their neighborhood, I think earlier communication is better.
Yeah, just maybe--
I think, um-- Why don't we do a contingent? On? Contingent on what?
I mean, we're just voting to earmark the money right now.
Yeah.
We're not voting to spend the money until we have the grant money.
Yeah.
So that, I think that's our contingency there.
When's the grant application due?
October 1st, I guess. I mean, gonna, we'll have-- It's been burning on my, I, I know exactly what you're saying, so I totally, no. And I asked the questions.
I mean, this might be an unpopular, this might lead to an unpopular opinion, but let's say we get the grant funding, we do the design, we have something, and we're going to vote on it, it's ultimately our decision to move forward with that.
Yeah.
They can appeal, within the appeal period, but that is only good if we are violating anything that's documented from a by-law perspective.
So just to be, you know, clarity in terms of the scope of the project, this project the way it is, within the right-of-way, we would typically just have a right-of-entry form signed by the abutter to be able to go in and blend it in. But at, where we're at at the moment, I wouldn't presume that we would get it necessarily, maybe we do, but I haven't had the conversation, so, to your point, the other op, you know, it may be where we'd have to actually obtain a temporary easement, construction easement to be able to go in. It couldn't go that route, right?
Right, but this could also be something that we can use as a conversation in other things.
Yeah, I think you, I would recommend going forward, but I mean, if it's, if we, if we can't get a right-of-entry-- We have, we can't continue on, because we're not gonna be able, we won't be time for that.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with going forward, I just think there needs to be some sort of outreach alongside that, so that we're kind of, we're driving this narrative and we're not defending something that they feel like was already, you know, done and put in motion before they had an opportunity to weigh in.
Yeah, well, to, I guess to Melissa's point, um-- You know, there's been a--
Sidewalks everywhere.
This is a greater interest, right, from the town to be able to provide--
Sidewalks everywhere.
Sidewalks, mobility, and--
Not just that, but from like a process perspective, it sets a, a poor precedent.
Everywhere, and I, to your point--
To let people know that could be watching the YouTube of this, that we're considering--
No, that if they're not, that we're gonna proactively reach out to them at every behest, whenever we mention something that's happening tangentially within their area. We can't do that for every single project, and we do it when it makes sense for us to do it. So like, at this point, it doesn't necessarily make sense for us to do it, because we don't even know if we have the money to do this yet. So we might be getting them riled up for no reason. If that's the direction they go in, right, they could be--
Or they might appreciate their early heads up and make it, make your life easier the whole way along.
A hundred percent, yeah, it could go either way, but it, it's also setting a bad precedent that that's gonna be an expectation of what we're gonna do for every project that could possibly at some point in the future.
Well, I mean, no, this is a little different, because we literally just approved something in their neighborhood--
I get that.
Two meetings.
No, I a hundred percent get that, but again, we would have to keep score every time that happens.
There is, um--
Yeah, I guess, I mean, you, my, my only point is that I, I would recommend some sort of outreach and not just, we'll follow up with them when we have to, or be required to post a public hearing on this, because of the--
Well, I mean, we have to do the public hearing on it anyway, and at that point, they'll be getting your abutters notice.
Right, so let's get way ahead of that, is my point.
You know, um, just, hold on a second, please, Steve. There may be two, I'm gonna see. I think there might be two rounds to this, so, what else is-- So having prior experience, coming to here, working on rails, trails, and sitting, or standing, if you will, between a room full of a hundred people or so, who were adamly opposed to it, I totally appreciate, you know, that process of it, to let them know, so I, I, it makes sense to do that. I also think that if there's, I think there might, if there's a spring one, I would say we could have discussions with the neighborhood now, and see where the discussions are, and then come back in the spring application, because we may need, if they go well, right-of-entry, and we're moving forward, there's no issue. If, if that's not the case, and we need an easement, temporary construction easement, I think it's, we would need to go to town meeting to do that, and then I think it's important for others to know that, you know, this is something, this will come up time to time, right? That there's a broader vision, we wanna have these off, you know, we wanna have walking, biking paths that are on the sidewalks, and there will absolutely be other situations where we're gonna need community support, because to serve the greater good, some people are gonna have to make some adjustments, or, you know, modify their expectations, you know, you can't, your self-interest doesn't rule out over, I think, the broader interest of the community, so, right?
Yeah.
But to give them, to give them a forewarning, if you will, I think it's a fair thing. So it's a lone round of thing to say, I, I'll double-check with-- So it's a lone round thing to say, I'll double-check with, you know, Mast out to see if there's a spring round. If there is, I could just get back to you and say, "Look, if there is, let's just apply in the spring, and we can do the outreach with the neighbors, you know, over the next couple of months, so it gets done."
So it's either, so you're gonna leave here tonight with the hope that there's one in the spring, because the application is due on the 1st of October?
Yeah. Yeah, because I mean, I struggle with this, honestly, to the same point, because if we need, if you need a, it's chicken anything, there's timeframes, when the money's available to go do it, but if you need a temporary easement, it's...
What's the worst case if we do go forward? We get the funds, and we decide not to use the funds?
Well, we can, you know, we could also just say we don't wanna proceed. We're not ready, we're not ready to proceed.
Or we could use them for a different portion of this?
Uh, not for, no.
Oh, okay.
We could, we would essentially have to choose a different project, so...
Okay.
What does the actual application consist of? Like, what are you actually submitting? Is it just like a narrative, we wanna improve access in the path here, or you're actually like submitting a, you know?
We're not submitting plans, no. It's more a narrative. Some of the stuff that you saw, and that's PowerPoint, it would go in with the application, because we don't, because we're, we haven't designed it yet, so...
Just so I'm really clear, so we wouldn't move forward with this beta contract unless we were awarded?
Yeah, we're not gonna move forward with our contract unless we're awarded the money.
Yeah, so we're just earmarking the money towards that, in case we get it.
Do we need to do that right now?
Maybe not, I could just submit it and...
What if we did this? What if we submitted the application for the 1st, and then in intervening months between application and award, made some sort of outreach to the neighborhood to let them know what was going on? So it's not all of a sudden, you know, they're looking at a state representative's Facebook that Norfolk got X amount of dollars for the path in front of their house, they've heard it from us first, and then we make a decision on the beta engineering. And I think one thing we could even think of too is like, do we wanna add something to the scope of, you know, one community meeting, or something like that in that process? Because there is language in here about obtaining, you know, rights and...
I don't know that I'd necessarily want beta to be the face of that, I'd rather call it MAPC or something.
Yeah, I mean, we could...
But whatever, that's beside the fact, but, I mean, would people be comfortable with that, that we submit the application, and in parallel, between now and whenever awards would be, have some sort of outreach?
I'm open to it.
I like the outreach idea, I think it's always good to get ahead of it. I mean, I've, I mean, we're all elected, we can, you know, we're working on behalf of everyone, you could go knock on their door tomorrow if you wanted to, but I think it's, it would be nice to have more of a, you know, we could put it out even on Facebook and say, you know, "We're working on this multimodal path, everybody wanted sidewalks, let's, you know, come and come to our meeting, come talk about it," you know, just as, just as us, you know, put it out there and get some feedback, because I don't think people oftentimes are paying attention to, there are just so many boards and committees, I don't think people look at our agenda items regularly.
I just also wanna be careful that we're not getting people's hopes up for such a small section of this, when the plan is so much larger.
But the phases are in there.
They are, but we don't have a committed date or timeline for when those are all gonna be done.
No, we don't, but I don't think we need it. I think to, yeah, I think, but to Dan's point, we did have a project that showed up on the community Facebook page, that was earmarked funds for a park that wasn't a priority for our town, nobody even knew what it was, right? So it was, it was the Boardman Street Park, but it was spelled Broadman.
Oh, the, the walking path one?
It was supposed to be a senior park.
Yeah, the walking path one, yeah. They got the funds for it, nothing ever happened.
No, they got a portion of the funds for it, so nothing ever happened.
Well, they got all of the funds, and then they realized it was gonna cost more than what they requested.
No, no, they knew how much it was going to cost previously, and then we got like $10,000 when it was gonna be like $240,000. So back to, but this is like the point that Dan's making, like, let's be proactive, so that we make sure that we have the buy-in before we get the money, you know, and that we have enough money, of course, which was the problem with the other one as well.
And if you want, go home and Google the Williamsburg, Massachusetts multimodal path. It's basically exactly that, so it's like, it's like a quarter mile running down a street to add to the sidewalk, and it's got the whole town up in arms and split over it, because there was no outreach before any of the engineering and design was done. So I just don't wanna end up in that position.
Yeah.
But if it's, if what we're submitting for the application is conceptual, and there's an opportunity to, you know, as that application goes in, let people know that, hey, this is something that we're progressing and seeing if it's an opportunity for us, then I'm good with that.
Who is it?
Williamsburg?
Williamsburg, Mass.
I think... Yeah, I think probably a more...
We've had public meetings before.
Want to say measure, conserve, I don't know the right word. We could do the, we could do the... Yeah. We could, we could do the outreach first, before we even submit.
The submit is due, and if we got that money, could we use it for something else if we don't move forward with this?
No, because it's project-based seminal.
Earmarked with the actual project name. Would we have a deadline for them to take the money back, or could we leave it in the account if we got it?
This is, no, it's a little bit different, because they expect it to be constructed, so, you know, it's...
So there's terms attached?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're expecting that this money is...
But that's actually still, I think that's still okay, though, right? Because if we put in the request, I mean, worst-case scenario, I mean, it's time spent on the grant application, right? But it's a, what's the worst-case scenario? We can't move forward, and we don't accept it, and it goes to a different town? Better than waiting for another grant cycle.
That part right there. Yeah, I mean, I think if there's ways to do, like, do both of these things, prepare the application, get rid of submit it, endorse submit it, and do a little bit of outreach at the beginning, then, well, I'm not trying to overcomplicate things, I just think that...
No, no, no.
Kind of lead from ahead instead of behind.
Yeah.
And then that way, too, if we're doing a public meeting, which we have done, usually it's something, you know, a bigger project than this, because it is just a piece of it, but it might get some people excited about, you know, the whole, the different phases that we have, just showing it does go through a lot of the town. But that way, we're not saying to a couple of residents, "We want your input," and we're seeking them out, it's putting, you know, proactively putting information out there, saying, "We're hosting a public meeting, we have an update, we're working on getting funding, just wanna show everybody, if you're interested, come."
Yeah, and, you know, maybe this is part of further engagement on what we're doing to implement some of the recommendations of the...
Master plan. Yeah, because last time, we had a master plan, and there was progress made, but most people didn't know.
Yeah, definitely is. I think in terms of looking at the task list and, you know, October 1st, I think it probably needs, I don't know, for a good effort, I think we probably should have to wait, I think it makes sense, after I'm thinking that through, because I don't wanna, you start, I'm going back to when I was working on the other project, and every, some of the comments that were raised by residents, and, you know, everybody's gonna have their comments, but, you know...
So then we have to wait for another grant cycle, so we'd have to wait for that money to come available another time, and we don't know when that would be, right?
It'll be next year, it'll be the following, I don't know if there's, it may be this time next year, not in the spring, but I'd rather be caught conservative and approach it so we can do it successfully than not, so I completely understand that.
So now we've circled around to from outreach to nothing, and just letting it die for the time being?
Well, circled around to, there'll be outreach, so that's not nothing, I guess, right? But...
But now it doesn't have any timeline at all associated with it?
No, no, all right, let me back it up. So the outreach would happen, so that way, we, if we can be doing the spring, we would do in the spring, I'll get back to you. If not, then we would do the outreach, so that we're ready to go next year, at this time, to apply for it. So I know it's construction 27, because it pushes out, the actual construction would be a year, you know, from that.
Is there any reason that we can't submit the grant this year, and then just, you know, worst-case scenario would be that we can't move forward, but I just don't think that would be the case?
What's the timeline for use?
To use the money?
Yeah.
Gotta be done by next June 30th?
Can you even do something like that in that period of time?
It's not a, it's just the design.
Oh, you're, oh, okay.
It needs to be done in the same fiscal year, so you have the money.
It's not that... Let's do, I'm gonna pause.
I mean, how long's the design gonna be good for? We could just get the design and sit on it.
Yeah, the design would be, oh, no, the design would necessarily age out, I mean, that's...
Right, so I mean, I think having that in our back pockets...
If you wanted to, we'd do the outreach, and then move forward with the idea of depending upon the outreach, then move to the design, we don't have to, we don't have to spend the money, I wouldn't, just the concept that the money is available to do it.
But why wait? So I think, I think, so that's pushing it out a year for something that's on the master plan, that we could start executing on potentially now.
Yeah, I, just to be clear, I'm not, I wasn't advocating to push this out a whole year. I think it would be fair to say, we have put in this grant application, if we are successful, here is the process, here is when we will be, you know, engaging, here's when decisions will be made, just so all of a sudden, the first time people are hearing about this is when we're awarded the grant, and then all of a sudden, they think the train's fully left the station, and they have no way to get involved, so they immediately, you know, go into defensive mode and start opposing it.
Okay.
Because I think if we're just saying, we have, we're spending money on a design, and then someday we'll get money, potentially, to build it, then it's like...
Is anyone taping me?
Wah wah. Huh?
Nothing, I was just voting.
Yeah.
There's nothing to lose, just do it.
Yeah, I think 100% I agree with Gary.
Do it. We could submit the application, and then...
You got a lot of alternative stuff.
Same in process, wild, you know, so it has to go in October, well, we can do outreach thereafter the seminal.
Yeah, let's kick off the conversation.
All right, so then are we gonna vote on earmarking some money for this design, on the sidewalk fund?
I thought you said we didn't have to do that until we had a sense of if we were getting the grant.
You don't necessarily have to vote, but if I come back and, you're not gonna, I wanna have confidence, you're confident to spend the money on it, everything lines up.
I'm ready to spend it now, Dan's holding my wallet hostage.
No, it's a good, it's a good point. I mean, I think that we, I mean, we can...
You're always entitled to change your mind.
We can make it conditional, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
That we spend the money.
We can say, yes, we can earmark it for that, and then we make a decision in the future as to whether or not to actually move forward and enter into that contract.
Yeah, I'm not asking you, I'm asking you basically to earmark it, not sign the contract.
Yeah, you just wanna know if we're all committed to it.
We're just saying, hey, we're gonna go to a store, we're shopping for something, we have an idea of what we want.
Send the basket, shop the basket.
Make a budget before we go out.
Exactly, and if we don't like what we see, then we don't have to buy it. If we like something else a little bit more, maybe we get that one, spend a little bit more money.
Except that's earmarked, so you're shopping for one thing and one thing only.
In that category, okay. All right, well, that's good enough.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the earmarking of funds in the value of, what was it, $62,000?
Yes.
From the sidewalk fund to support the Medway branch shared-use path Phase 1 Barnstable Road to Tucker Road project.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Do you wanna make it conditional, Dan, on getting that money, or is there anything that would make you feel better?
No, no, I think if we're, if we're, when we're calling it earmarking it, setting it aside, whatever, I think that's fine, and I think, Rich, maybe if you can think a little bit more while you're preparing the application, on how we will engage through this process, and maybe we can spend a couple minutes on it again in October.
Sure. Yeah, you can do that.
Awesome, then do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. 15 minutes, Rich.
You did the minutes, right?
Yep.
Down there.
Shire Industrial Park update.
No update.
Awesome, favorite kind. Any other updates?
No, no more update, just need to vote on a meeting day change.
I ask a question, or is everybody sick of me?
Nobody's sick of you.
Dan, usually this is me, so please, please ask your question.
Ask more. Is there any updates on the two stormwater permit, pending applications for the streets in Long Meadow?
Long Meadow?
28, is it 28 Long Meadow, right?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, 28 Long Meadow. I don't have an application yet.
You still don't have an application?
No.
What date did we give him till?
A while ago.
Yeah, it's a while ago.
But we had good faith movement from them at one point.
At this point, we may be able to...
Yeah, when he came in with...
Build a bike path on the fines that we've threatened.
Yeah.
We could just put it right through there, where he cut down all the trees.
Let me, I did actually email him again, so corresponded with him, because they're supposed to go to the commission tomorrow night, but because, so they were gonna go to the, we're talking about 28 Long Meadow Road.
Yeah.
They were, before the commission, August, one of the things was to do some additional sampling, and take some water samples and have them evaluated, because there was some elevated levels, forget what it was. Was it lead? Yeah, I think it was lead. So there's a question about the sampling, might have contaminated it, so they're gonna take some additional samples. Of course, since that time, the water's dried up, so there is no water to sample, so they weren't able to do that. But then, but then they also asked the same time, can we start to remove the material out of the wetlands? And I said, "Well, that would be great, because it's dry period of time, however, you haven't submitted to the plan anymore yet to do your stormwater management permit, nor your earth removal permit," so that's on hold, so, but they're not gonna be before the commission tomorrow night. They said they're gonna be in here, I think, we're, we're probably at the, we're getting close to passing the grace point here. We need to at least have an application here.
Yeah.
I think we passed the grace point, that was a while ago.
Well, it's beyond grace, yeah.
All right, so can we get an agenda item for that property for our next meeting?
Yeah.
And then at that point, we'll make that final decision as to what we're doing?
Yeah, and there is 50 Fruit Street, too.
Yeah, I just, I saw you guys cover that when Melissa and I were having the Zoom issues, and then in the minutes you had said that your, the owner indicated they would submit a stormwater application.
Yeah, their engineer, let's, so that, hold on a second, let me look at my emails. 50 Fruit Street.
There goes your 90 minutes of air conditioning.
It's not bad, no.
Yeah, their engineer was, so he was on vacation for tonight, so that's why he didn't submit it for tonight's meeting, for 50 Fruit Street, had to go back and look and see, so...
All right, so we'll have them on the agenda as well.
You'll have them out for October here, I don't anticipate any issues with them in terms of...
What was it, what was the conversation with them like? Did they just not know that they needed?
So they did, there was communication, they did come in, meet with the building department in terms of, you know, what they could clear, and... So they did, there was communication, they did come in, meet with the building department in terms of, you know, what they could clear and there was. Then I talked to the building house retiring and. It wasn't, they didn't come in with a plan, say, I wanna cut this, you know, clear this, and so. Not recognizing that they went beyond what they should have done. So I think it was a, it seemed to be a fairly, in this case.
Honest mistake.
Yeah, it was honest mistake, because the, because the owner of the property is, is very. Is shown, he follows the bylaws and compliant, they have other, they have. Well, they just, they, they just did the two, the four Sharon's Avenue, that's one of them, the, their partners are doing eight Sharon's Ave. So I think it was honestly legitimate in terms of, um, what he, his overall goal is actually to kinda mimic Jane and Paul's. He was that, he's building a home for his family and kinda have a mini farm there and he was actually talking about. Putting fields in and probably maybe hay or whatever kind of thing, so I think that was a legitimate. And the, the stormwater is just more related to Fruit Street. That the one neighbor is experiencing, because there's no, the water's just going right through and passing on to the abutters property.
Yeah.
Cause it catches, so anyway, so they do plan to commit.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, awesome, um, so then you said meeting dates is the last thing?
Yeah, the, your November meeting is Veterans Day, so.
So that's, uh, Veterans Day, so what do you propose, you wanna go to the eighteenth?
Well, actually.
Oh, I don't think it is.
No, we, Veterans is the eleventh.
It's a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we actually talked about.
What about Monday, the tenth?
The tenth?
It's fine for me.
I can make that work, are we doing it in person?
Yeah. All right, so we'll change it to the tenth.
All right, can you just send a note to Gary?
Yes.
The other Gary?
The other Gary. Yep.
The other Gary S.
All right, um, any other anticipated, unanticipated new business that may come before the board?
No.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, have a good night.